The work session in the Dayton City Council for October 20.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. We have Jerry Strike here who was kind enough to come in and give a presentation on the Minnesota Fire Service in total. Take it away, Jerry. Thank you very much.
All right. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Again, my name's Jerry Strike. I've spent, well, after graduating from high school, I served in the military as a combat medic. Came out, went into the fire service at nineteen. Spent thirty-two years on the job with almost half that time as a career chief in the metro area. I retired early because I had a business, and I do have a business, known as Capstone, and I moved into the private and public sector. So I've worked for communities as close as now then. To, I just got back two days ago from Lincoln, Nebraska, where there's sixteen fire stations, three hundred and eighty firefighters. I sat on the strategic plan for the city of Elk River. I spent two years not long ago helping the city of Otsego determine if they're going to move to their own department or continue with contracted services. I recently worked at the city of East Bethel. I've been all around the country. But my job is primarily to focus on strategy and leadership culture kind of stuff. In 2020, I was hired by the Minnesota State Fire Department Association on a four-year contract to travel the state of Minnesota to talk about recruitment and retention issues from International Falls down to La Crescent in east and west. And we built a recruitment strategy and learned a lot about the challenges communities are facing. And that's why I'm here today. I'm here to sort of be a guy that someone heard about, and here I am giving you the information that I learned. So today, I hope we can go through some laws and requirements, and I can help answer some questions that you may have. I haven't been to Dayton other than Dayton River Road. I drive my motorcycle and dune buggy in there all summer long, and I can't believe how many homes are in your town now. But we're going to look into the fire service, talk about response time, maybe get rid of some myths and all that kind of stuff. But the state of Minnesota, about five point six million people protected by approximately twenty thousand firefighters. Each community has their own fire service model, and we'll talk about what that means. It's interesting, because when I was a young chief at thirty-seven, I used to think you just follow the model. But every city has their own model. And that is because you have full control over how you want your services to be delivered. Unless you're in some sort of contracted service, or you're in a shared delivery model, or a joint powers entity or something, you have full control over the delivery model. So as you look at the screen, you'll see, and I should say that there's two definitions in Minnesota that define a firefighter, under state law. There's a full-time firefighter, forty hours, full benefits, just like you have full-time employees. And then there's the volunteer firefighter. But when you dig into what a volunteer firefighter is, it's all over the place when it comes to what that looks like. But in our minds, we think a volunteer is someone who is not paid. But in state law today, it means it's someone that's not full-time. So you have, with the exception of your fire chief looking on your website and stuff, you have a volunteer delivery model with a full-time chief. Some will argue, well, that's a combination department, because I have some full-time and I have some part-time. FEMA says you need a little bit more than one to be like a combination, full-time, part-time department. But you're in the paid-on-call model, and we'll go through that delivery system. But what's interesting to note is of the twenty thousand firefighters in Minnesota, there's probably, today, this number is low, because there's a very wide growth going right now in Minnesota related to full-time firefighters. But fewer than four thousand firefighters actually are full-time in Minnesota. So what law requires a fire department to There isn't one. There's no law that requires a fire department to exist in Dayton. It's certainly always under the control of the city council. And unless you're in, again, some sort of contracted service, for example, my first job as a chief, I managed what was then the largest fire district in the state of Minnesota. It was a multi-city district. I reported to three administrators and nine council members. But they had a unique position. They decided to share their service with another community to save primarily, in shared services, you primarily save on capital costs. So you don't have three aerial apparatuses right on your border and one of your own, so you could share it. But there are some laws that are required. And the city is required to ensure that you have an emergency management plan, and that that's updated. And there's a provision in there that you should have training and explain what the council's role is versus the operation role of emergency management. And emergency management is when there's enough activity in your community occurring from whatever disaster, that the resources that you've planned for over all these years are just overwhelmed. So now we're initiating mutual aid, and we're regional aid, and state aid, and state-to-state aid. And sometimes, in a millisecond, it can go from local aid to federal aid. You know, if we had a school shooting, or a fire at a church, believe it or not, even requires the ETF to deploy, and so on. Under the 299-F provisions, you're required to follow the state fire code. The state fire code typically puts the onus on the building owner to make sure they're following it. But the reason we're interested in, as local officials, in enforcing the fire code is we're trying to mitigate fires and explosions from occurring in our community. And we do that through education and through enforcement. And when we do that properly, you will see there's a reduction in incidents, but you'll also always hold your tax base. Because if you have a fire in a building, no matter what it is, that's being taxed, it will immediately go to probably property tax, and that could even be waived if there's no longer a business there for a period of time. So the fire service has long been part of protecting tax base and minimizing insurance loss. And when you hear insurance services office and all that kind of stuff, the ISO rating, that's all about having a emergency response plan that includes the fire department, that can get there as efficiently as possible to establish and mitigate the incident, so it reduces loss. You're required to do a criminal background check on all firefighters. Makes sense? Firefighters and civilian fire deaths shall be reported to the Minnesota State Fire Marshal's Office. A number of years ago, they decided they wanted to do their best in investigating those, because what's predictable is preventable. So if we can conduct an investigation of how people lost their lives in the event of a fire, they can then work to educate people to prevent it. And your firefighters and your chief and staff are filling out reports after every incident that goes into the Minnesota Fire Incident Reporting System, which collectively, through the seven hundred and twenty-five fire departments, tells a story of what the Minnesota fire problem is. And the State Fire Marshal's Office gives a report every year, and you can go download them online, that says, here's what the fire problem is in Minnesota. But that may not be the fire problem in Dayton, because you may be having a lot of garage fires, but the Fire Marshal's Office is the leading cause of fires in a kitchen, for example. So we use it as an education tool. And that fire investigations then next to determine how a fire began, by law, the city is required to investigate all fires with a loss greater than $100, which basically means everything. Why? Because they want to report on what started the fire, so they can learn what the fire problem is. And then that in turn helps the educators go out. But it also gives us federal funding if we have, we discover we have a ton of losses in our senior citizen demographic or something. You're required to maintain confidential data. It is uncommon for council members to ask a lot of questions related to an incident that occurred. And I think we just have to respect that some of that data by law can't be shared. But you should be in the know of what's going on in your community. You just may not be able to get all the details of what that actually meant. For example, names, you know, what was the cause? Well, we're not a medical examiner, so we can't determine that, you know. So don't be offended if you don't get all the information you're looking for. But somehow, the media gets it in a matter of seconds anyway. Hazardous materials. Investigate and disseminate anything that's hazardous, from any kind of terrorist attack, to a leak or spill, to things that are built in basements. Sky's the limit. You'll be amazed at what you learn when you get involved in the fire department of your community and the things that happen. And then OSHA, of course, OSHA's job, we're in OSHA state, OSHA's primary purpose is to ensure that employees are safe. So we have to file reports when there's injuries and so on. But when you look at the city of Dayton, and I've done my own Googling and got private, public data and all that stuff, there's a lot of things that happen in the background that are not response-ready. In fact, when people say, "Strike, what do you think the problem is with recruitment?" Because keep in mind, recruitment and retention are two different things, okay? Recruitment is inspiring people to want to be on your team and staying here, right? Just like trying to get someone to come into your city. So we get them into the zone, what's the number-one way to do it? And that is, prepare them to do their job well, and let them do their job well. And the rest of the stuff, we have the chief and others in the background working on, to make sure they're not buried down with all kinds of things that they weren't planning on. Because most new recruits come in, they have no idea, and council members have no idea. When I say, "What level of service do you want?" You're like, "I don't even know what that means." And I respect that, so we have to teach you. But there's fire incidents that have to be filled out, emergency medical reports, all types of equipment, I'd imagine. You have two stations. I mean, you have millions of dollars in equipment that are prepared to respond to the community when they call. They work on investigation reports, where every hour you're on the scene of an investigation, there's three hours writing a report, you know. The same is true going on an incident. You don't just go on the incident, you got to come back, make sure the vehicles are equipped and properly prepared for the next incident, which we don't know when it's going to come, and get ready to respond and make sure our people are ready and prepared to go. So there's a lot of things that happen in the background outside of just going to fire calls or looking at those numbers. Recruiting alone can be a full-time job. When you have seventy-five to one hundred and fifty people, whatever it is, even thirty people, you need to recruit, it's a long game. It's an everyday game, too, recruiting. And you need to do everything that's required in employment law for an employee, because under state law, even though you're a volunteer, you are an employee of the city. And you cover their insurance if they get hurt, and they have employee rights and everything else. We got to get them paid, we got to manage a relief association, we've got to do reports, we got to, all kinds of stuff happens in the background. We've got to prepare a budget, we got to purchase items, and all that stuff can be a lot for one person or a group of volunteers who have other things to do in their life. So these are the fire service delivery models I was talking about. For many, many years, this country, fire service has been around a couple hundred years in our country, but Dayton is what, sixties, sixties?
Oh, sixty-two.
Sixty-two. So since nineteen sixty-two, the city of Dayton has had a volunteer department, where you did have volunteers. You didn't have to pay them as much as they're paid now. But the reality is, time has become the new money. And most people aren't here unless there's purpose, and they can fit it into their lifestyle. So our job is to fit it into their lifestyle. But because we could get people to volunteer, we then started paying them, and we came up with a term called paid-on-call. So they're paid, but they're waiting patiently for their pager to go off. And when their pager goes off, wherever they are in the world, they have to make a decision on if they can respond to the call or not. And they want to make it to the call, because we have city policy that says they have to make a certain percentage of calls to be in good standing. And if they're not in good standing, well, then we have decisions to make. Then we write up the volunteer. And if you continue to get written up as a volunteer, morale goes low, because I'm a volunteer, right? But we started paying them. We had increased laws and demands, and the training requirements today are, you know, just phenomenal. The State Fire Marshal's Office just put out a RFP for someone to do a survey of all of that stuff over the next couple of years, required by law, and funded by the legislature. And we'll see how that turns out. But there's a lot of requirements to become a firefighter today, and that all has to be done while you're going to calls and managing your family. When all that fails, we start to look at a full-time manager. When we can't get all that backend stuff done, we hire a full-time manager. You call him a fire chief, emergency manager. C.D. Delano, who I've worked with recently, calls him an emergency services director. There's just different names, because you're in control. And we call them the same thing, they're fire chiefs, but they have different titles. So now you have a full-time manager managing the backend of everything that's going. You have the firefighters doing their excellent work, coming to calls when they can, and they're making huge impact in the community. But like I said, time has become the new money. We're seeing a significant shortfall in those who can volunteer their time, because it is about money today. In most cases, it may cost the firefighter, especially in the distance you have to your stations, it may cost them money, because they have to pay for gas, and the time, and whatever, loss of time from work or whatever to come. So then, when we can't find the right people to come to the calls, and we have data that says we have an imbalance delivery system, imbalance system, what does that mean? That means at night, when everybody's in Dayton, we got enough people coming to calls. But in the daytime, you're not alone, and we don't have the number of people to go to calls. We have an imbalance system. So a taxpayer can say, "How come that truck took twenty-five minutes to get," which is a reality here, "to get to my house?" And the one at nights is, "It took ten minutes to get here." Why is that fair, right? I don't know that you've had that discussion. But as your community grows, and as your constituent base have other expectations, because they may be moving from Plymouth, or Brooklyn Park, or something that has a three- to six-minute response time, they may expect that same delivery model here. So councils have to be aware of that. And I always say, "It's better to be prepared than not prepared," when they come into the office. So because there's an imbalance in this system, to my understanding, looking at your data and how many people show up for calls, the concept of a duty crew came in. A duty crew is using the same volunteer, but you're staffing them at the station during your most critical times. Now, what that does is it takes some weight off the chief and assistant chief and the officers, because you know the station is staffed. When there's a call, I guarantee you, on staff stations, they save lives. If they don't save lives, like literally doing CPR, saving lives in the first year, there's something wrong. But when we use data and the delivery model that you have, that come from home, or wherever you are, and get to the station, and we'll look at the timeline in a little bit, we're brain-dead clinically in six minutes. Your firefighters may not even be here for eight minutes. So when you staff them in the station, and they're out the door, they're making an impact. They don't have a biggest crew, let per se, but because I have a crew there now who didn't have to drive to the station, we saved the six to eight to ten minutes getting to the scene. And we now are putting water on the fire, or cutting the person out of the car much quicker than we would in the service model you have now. So that's the concept of duty crew. And most people love duty crew. There may be some firefighters in here that say, "Ah, hey, duty crew." Well, give it a try. Because when you can now say, "Wow, I get to schedule my time at the fire station, and I can work this many shifts and be in good standing," your retention increases. Because I'm no longer held to a phone or a pager and have to respond whenever it goes off. And we can use some data to say you're most likely to have calls between six and ten, or whatever. But during the daytime, a lot of the communities, and you see it escalate very quickly. You can look at Brooklyn Park, not far from here, that was in this model six, seven years, let's just say, fewer than ten years ago, and now they're all career, you know. And it's just escalating. But a duty crew is a step to try it, to see if that resolves it. Because you've had these volunteer systems that's very low-cost for a long period of time. So the strategy is, let's just do these incremental changes over time, to see if we can stretch this out as long as we can. And then let's plan to put some money aside for five years, ten years, whatever it is, to make sure that as we move forward, we're prepared for that cost that we're going to expect, because as your city grows, your call volume's going to increase. So am I hearsaying Dayton's going to be full-time? Not for a long time, in my opinion. But what that is, you're going to have to watch your call volumes. When I look at your demographics right now, when you go online and look at it, it's like this, basically straight up and down on your growth. So I would expect your call volume to be the same. So when we talk about measuring these models, the service delivery, what service do you want to provide, means what types of calls do you want to provide to your communities, to your constituents, your residents? Do you want your firefighters, and do you want to pay for someone who's feeling ill with a runny nose? Do you want them to go to a broken femur? Do you want them to go to someone who collapsed and is in full cardiac arrest? Do you want them to go to a bleeding tattoo scab? What level of service are you going to provide the community, and what's the expectation? And when you all know that, then when someone calls and says, "It took twenty minutes for us to get here," we say, "Yeah, that's the delivery model we have right now," you know? We're working to improve it, but this is why, right? And we're just in, we're in a very tight-growing capacity right now. Call volume's a pretty good indicator of the service delivery that's going on. You can change the call volume, you know, especially on the medical sides, and you can, if you had the duty crew in place during the daytime, you may not have to dispatch everybody to the station like you currently do, two stations dispatched at once. You just have the duty crew go, and no one else in the department knows, because you got a special pager, or tone on your pager now. I'm not sure how it's going to be set up, but I'm just giving you some ideas, right? That duty crew can then be used to maintain all the equipment, so that we don't have to call people into the station for a maintenance night and take time away from their family. The duty crew can do that. The duty crew, I've seen duty crews do hydrant flushing. I've seen all kinds of stuff they have done. But the idea is, when the call comes out, everybody knows there's someone available with the right piece of equipment to respond as quickly as possible to help the community. And it's the same volunteer, but scheduled on a shift, and they get to sign up for the shift, or there's a lottery system. There's a number of ways of that, too. Again, we talked about local expectations, the people that are building our nice homes, and what are their expectations of a delivery model? And it's really hard to ask, because most people will never use it. Not everyone's dialing 911. But when they do dial 911, I attest to this, they want you there when? Now. And this is, we ask you to think about your family and my family, because I've been thinking about this my whole life, my whole career, is how quickly and what is realistic for a response time. Knowing that your ambulance provider is not connected to us, they're a third-party entity owned by a private company. So we're not on the radio talking to them and looking at our phone, and, are we? Just want to make sure we didn't advance. But we're not looking at the phone and seeing where the ambulance is. We're consistently asking dispatch, "Can I get an ETA for the ambulance?" And ambulances typically arrive for advanced life support, the stuff that you need to go to the hospital for. And there's a lot of research that, you can get it on the ICMA website and so on, that says, you know, a very few percent of the people we treat in the medical field are actually going to die if we don't treat them on the scene. Most people get in an ambulance and go to the hospital, and wait in the emergency room, just like anyone else that's in the emergency room. So we have to balance out time of our firefighters, to make sure they have time. And, you know, firefighters love to go on calls. But in order to keep this model the most cost-efficient as possible for your tax base, we find these little incremental changes that allow us to add value and keep that model running with the same volunteer. If it doesn't work with the volunteers, like you don't get people to sign up for duty crews, you can look at the Blaine Spring Lake Park Mountain View, they just posted, I saw the other day, they're doing lateral duty crew members. What does that mean? I can be on any duty crew, from Eden Prairie to Minnetonka to Blaine, and I could come to Dayton if I want to. And there are people who create a full-time job, just basically Velcro patching. They're a firefighter, highly-trained people, that will, that can come, and they just basically put the Dayton patch on, and they make a full-time job out of it, because they're hopping from city to city. So reduction in insurance costs, we talked about that. Retention is primarily trying to keep our employees as long as we can. And the reason we do that is we spend a lot of money to put these people on. And I'm sure the chief has told you. But we're at eight to $10,000 per new firefighter, to equip them for all the gear they need, just to do the job. Why? OSHA requires it. And when you're wearing a jacket that's $1,700, and pants that are $900, and a helmet that's $600, and $400 boots, and seventy, or seventy, eighty, ninety-dollar hood, and I'm speaking like an old guy now, because that's probably a lot higher than it is than when I was in, but we're talking fire trucks that are a million-dollar fire engines now.
Up.
Up. Okay, one point two? All right. So you'll see a slide here in a little bit of planning and preparing, because costs continue to go up. So when we look at response time from left to right, that question mark is some sort of call. That call, when you dial 911 from your home, your number goes to some sort of central location in a community, it could be a little building, that recognizes your number. And it's like a social security number, let's say. It takes your number and says, "That's a Hennepin County dispatch call." And it sends that call to Hennepin County Dispatch. "Police and fire, 911, how can I help you? What's your emergency?" "I've got a fire in my house on the second floor." "Sir, what's your address?" And they know the address, if it's coming on a landline. But with cell phones now, sometimes it's challenging. They ask a series of questions. So in that red bar, dispatcher asking all those questions, "Everybody out of the house? What part of the house is on fire? Can you get out?" You know, and guiding them through the process of trying to escape it, right? Then they dispatch the call. So all of this is adding time. In the pre-911, as an investigator for almost thirty years, digging fire scenes, we can't predict how long it took somebody to call. If your loved one goes down for a heart attack... If your loved one goes down for a heart attack, there's a high probability, not possibility, zero to 50 is possible, 51 to 100 is probable, there's a high probability you're going to take care of that loved one and start CPR for some time. You're not going to say, stay there, honey, I'm going to dial 911, which is what we try to train people to do. But then they realize, holy crap, I've got to dial 911. So then they get up. But that loss of that three to five minutes, especially related to the brain and oxygen to the brain, is what we can't predict. The same is true with the fire. Most people will try to fight their own fire before they call 911. And, or there's passerby's who see something happening and they don't want to get involved and they don't even dial 911. So it takes that one person to call 911 and have the courage to make the call. So anything in this yellow area is what we call turnout time. So the call came in, 911 entered it into their computer at a dispatch, they sent it out. It's already preloaded with what trucks and ambulances and police department are going to go to that specific PID, which I know you guys know. And they already know what units are going to respond to it. The incident type told CAD it needs a fire event because that's preloaded through the chief and dispatch. Fire unit gets dispatch, wherever they are in the world, they come to one of your two stations. They then wait and assemble for crews to arrive. One person may get there in two minutes, the next one may get there in six or eight or 10 minutes. Most departments now, not so much the outstate, but most metro departments have a, you don't go and rot with one. You're at a 40% greater chance of getting in a crash just being in an emergency vehicle. You don't want to do that alone. And what are you going to do when you get there with one person, right? So now you're in the station and you're waiting, you're assembling, you've got your gear on and you're waiting for people to come. And just look at the timeframe. Well, now we have to respond. And I already know in Dayton, if I'm at one of these stations, I may need a Snickers bar to get all the way to the other end of the community, you know, be with traffic and so on. You just have long runs for your fire station, right? This station, 1980s type station, was built around where probably a lot of people were. And as your community grows, you have to continue to evaluate where's the best response time where all those people are and where all of our development is. And then, once the firefighters get on the scene, they have to connect the water, they have to pull lines, they have two minutes according to national standards really to start mitigating the incident, take command, calling for more help, start putting water on the fire, start securing the vehicle, start going in the water, whatever it is, there's a period of time, and it can take a long time. So for any of the community members that watch this, sometimes it does take a long time because we are not a career department here. Most of the Minnesota are on a volunteer status, working to get the best response time they can for their community. Any questions on the response time? The pay-down call firefighter, when you start to dive in on what they really need, one of the biggest things they need is they need flexibility. They need the ability to say, oh, I want to go to Johnny's football game or to, you know, to Sammy's dance program, but I have to go to hose training at the fire station. So do I put my family first or do I put the fire department first? And these are the struggles our firefighters have. You know, they love their job, but they're constantly balancing family and time on the department and work and maybe their part-time job. So there's a big focus, they need a mission, vision, core values, they need, they need to be able to feel like a firefighter. You know, they need equipment so that they actually feel like they're doing their job and they need the support of the council and the support of the administrator and the support of the community. Because when people of this type who are giving basically a lot of their time and putting in a lot of risk, don't feel like they're respected or that anyone cares about what they're doing, it reduces the morale. And that's in, that's in any agency, any company around the globe. So we call the, today's firefighter, we call him the Swiss Army knife. You don't know who to call? Just call the fire department. And the beauty of that is everyone in Dayton that's on this department, they have careers that they bring to your community and skills. Like you've got a fire in a Walmart, which would be very hard to evacuate any kind of smoke or chlorine or anything out of. But there's an HVAC guy on your team and rather than being the chief and saying, we don't know how to solve it, we say, hey, Johnny knows how to do it. And he goes up and fixes it and the community benefits because the skills that they bring. From leadership to plumbing to nursing to police officer, whatever it is, they add a lot of value to the community just bringing their skill to us. So the current trends, volunteering is no longer a 20-year gig. It's more likely, shoot, just try to get five years out of them would be nice. Try to build a system that allows them to succeed, that they can build into the system. Hold them accountable. Accountability is frequently in any of the surveys I've done. We say, what's the number one focus this organization should work on? It isn't buy a 20-wheeler ATV or give me that new flashlight or I want the New Yorker leather fire helmet, it's hold people accountable. So that in itself means, you know, treat them fairly, but if they're not following the rules and the work rules, we have to have the power to get them back on track. We don't smack them down, but we have to get them back on track so we can count on them because you only have 27 firefighters. And if seven of them aren't showing up, now you have 20 firefighters. So we have to continually hold people accountable for the good, high five, hug, awards, all that stuff, and for the things that may not work out so well. It's a very dynamic workforce and it's a very dynamic job. It'll come out as one thing, we get there, it's something totally different. So you know that cost will continue to increase everywhere. Just, you know, I'm sure in every department, the cost of your fire department budget is probably 90-plus percent personnel and benefits, let's say. It probably is in the city, too, right, Zach?
Quite that high, but close.
But it's close, it's high. So when councils and community members think, wow, the chief's got all this money, there's typically not that much money in there for them to say, I'm going to go buy this widget. It just, it isn't there. Most of it is for, you know, electricity, water, utilities, maintaining equipment and putting fuel in the trucks and that kind of stuff. The best approach for you and using my experience is to be proactive. And now that you understand some of this stuff, and we'll open it up for questions here in a little bit, but being proactive is a long, you gain a lot of ground rather than being reactive and realizing we're way behind, now let's try to catch up. And because the system is changing rapidly from what we used to, we, I remember just putting a sign out in a, you know, Dayton sign and we had, you know, 10 people show up, you know? We'd have an open house and we'd put them on all the gear and next thing you know, we have five applications. I don't know if you're seeing that or not, but I don't know anyone that's seeing that. There are some wins, but marketing firms are hired, there's all kinds of stuff happening to get on the flat screens where people are looking to say, hey, we need you to come to, come join part of our team and because we're going to do that, the city of Dayton's giving you whatever, whatever we can offer. If it's an hourly rate, if it's pension, tuition reimbursement, whatever it is, we try to entice them to fill our stations so we can keep this model, the lowest cost model as long as possible. And if it's not working, it's the chief's job to say, it's just not working and we need to do something different. I don't know if you've had a discussion on the level of services you want to provide, but that should be, that should happen. Strategic plan would be nice. What a strategic plan does, it allows us to discuss what the future will look like and then we can link a line item in the budget to it. And we can say, okay, in three years, we're going to have this much money in the budget so that we can buy this or we can hire this. But strategic plan's really important to have so that we can predict the future and not go backwards like, oh, now we need this, and then try to find money for it. And then capital equipment's always a challenge to maintain the equipment in the stations. And if this is a 1980s facility, you know, just keep it maintained, there's nothing wrong with having a 1980s station as long as it works well and it's maintained right, right? So what do we have for questions based off that information?
I have a question. Maybe you can clear, I should close my mouth. Maybe you can clear up some information for me because I really honestly don't know. But we are registered with the Minnesota Emergency Medical Services as a medical response unit. Can you tell me what that means? Because I don't remember us moving in that. I said, I don't understand what that means. Can you say more about it?
Well, I think, I think it could be a lot of answers, quite frankly. But if they're listing you as a emergency responder, are you all EMTs or what?
Most.
Yeah, okay. So.
No. We used to not be, so we kind of transitioned to that. So I guess I'm just wondering as like, because you had said something earlier about like, what calls do we want to go on? And I think that that's kind of the direction, I have some questions pertaining to that. And so I'm just wondering, like, what does that mean for us and I guess what does it provide us? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we've had a lot of discussions around this area regarding that. The medic, the response for medicals is under the authority of what's called a primary service area, right? Since the 70s, legislature decided these little geographical areas of PSAs around the state. And then they assign the PSA to some sort of delivery model. So St. Paul, they have their, they own their own PSA.
Yes.
Apparently in the 70s, a letter went out to every town clerk and everybody that said, would you like to control your PSA or can you want us to control it for you? And for those who didn't know what they didn't know back then, we sort of gave away the PSA, which gives you control over how your delivery service is managed. So I don't, North Ambulance is your PSA provider here by law.
Yeah.
They're responsible for the medical calls. And because they own the PSA, they can determine through data, you know, where their busy areas are going to be. So they end up positioning their ambulances where they're likely going to have a call. Just makes sense, right? And essentially, they can build a business model out of the predictive measurements to determine how many ambulances they need, how many full-timers they need, what, who's an ALS unit, who's a VLS unit. But because they own the PSA, you don't own control over that. However, we do know in Dayton that there may be longer response times for an ambulance to arrive. And when that occurs and it's consistent, communities say, well, our firefighters can go and help the community member wrap their bandage or take their blood pressure rather than have them wait a long period of time. Our fire service is trained as EMTs or EMRs and they can go there on their behalf. And I think for your size, and I'll tell you, it's public data, East Bethel, we just got down off several months over there, we had the same discussion, is they've been providing the same service for years and years and years. So past practice becomes policy in some people's minds, right? So now councils are concerned about changing the level of service because what will happen? What if? But then we use our own data and say, data tells us that these types of calls, the top 10, let's say, is where we can make the most impact. Do we need to go to a bleeding tattoo scab? And what, and I'm not downgrading anyone's emergency, right? That's their emergency. But what impact can we make as a firefighter at 2:00 in the morning on that? They're going to get, an ambulance is going to come, they may not even sign, they may take off. So those are discussions you can have with your chief on what he believes and I assume you're going to every medical?
Yes.
Okay. And you can decide if that's going to help. And then if you do decide to change that, you continue to monitor it and you continue to see if there are any outliers or if something happens. And you can work with North or the council could ask for the North supervisor to come here and ask them what they're doing, what can you do to increase your response or to reduce your response times in our area? You know, you provide our ALS for us. So there's a number of options.
What are all their incentives either way? Because I got the feeling they'd like us to take over everything.
Yeah.
What are their incentives to do what they're tasked to do?
Well, they're required by law to do it.
Right, but what does that mean?
What does that mean?
If they get here in an hour, is that good enough?
There is sort of a response matrix and, and a timeframe. I'm out of what that is today.
Okay.
Anybody? Ambulance?
Is that the 18 minutes, 59 seconds thing?
Yes, it is. So mayor, members of council, depending upon if you are considered suburban or rural, you've heard me talk about, there's a difference basically at our city border between Maple Grove and Dayton. So in Dayton, North has the ability to respond code three lights and sirens in 17 minutes and 59 seconds, 90% of the time. They can go to Maple Grove and reduce that based on whatever, I don't know where these numbers exactly come from, but they are required to be there, I think it's in 11 minutes and 59 seconds or something like that. So they have a shorter response time to that side of the city.
So financially, let's say we were to handle all their calls. How does that help or hurt that private business? Do they get subsidies for a call? Do they get, I mean?
If you decided to take it on, you would have to have the law change that you own the PSA?
No, what I mean is clearly they, they would like us to handle all medicals. They've made that clear.
Okay.
Why would they do that? It's their private business.
They may do that because they know that Dayton, it takes a long time to get here.
Well, that's because they're not here.
That's because they're not here.
Right.
Right. So there is a, there's a system, a rotating system in the metro of ambulances. And I, in, in the stations that I, or the cities that I've managed, I've had three or more stations, in Minnesota, we had an ambulance at each station. And that ambulance was sold to the council that we're going to get a faster response time. Most of the time, it didn't happen. They're on transfers. If I transfer someone from hospital to hospital, it's profit. They typically lose money on emergency response. The reason your staff is, go ahead, mayor.
No, that's what I was waiting for.
Okay. The reason, the reason your staff is likely going to all the medicals and just based off other cities I've worked with is because of that length of time. And you can talk to city of Roseville right now, call Pat Trudgen, they just bought their own ambulance. They don't own the PSA, but they know it takes, it takes the service a long time to get there, so they bought their own ambulance and they're like, we need to provide this to our community and that was sort of pushing the trend a little bit.
So that leads me to another question. We asked the fire chief to put together a severity kind of classification of all of the calls that we go on and ranking them, meaning like non-urgent, urgent but stable and then like threatening emergencies that we 100% should be getting in the truck and going. So my question along that line is, it really is like, I guess backing up a couple of slides, the service level is up to us to say, the fire department, and we're playing hypotheticals here, is no longer going to go to these severities, which would be your bleeding tattoo, those things where I believe, I don't want to quote anybody, but it was warm bodies is what the department said. We're there, we're managing the scene, but we're not actually providing service other than being that calming warm body there. So it's up to us to decide, right? Like that's completely in our realm to say, if we're going to reduce those and we're not going to go to, I just picked one through four severity, right, because it's ranking one to 10. Does that still then warrant, I guess I go back to my first question, this whole, that classification, do we?
I'm not sure what that is.
The?
That, that titles you as a medical responder?
Medical responding, well, maybe Gary can answer that. Because on November 8th in 2024, we registered as a medical response unit with the Minnesota Emergency Medical Services and it expires in 2026, so it's a two year. And I just, I don't understand what that means and why we would have moved to that classification.
Mayor, members of council, the reason for that is so that we can do training. It has nothing to do with the level of service that we provide. So we're registered with the Office of Emergency Medical Services.
So we can give. So we can give our own service in-house?
Uh, so we can, yeah, so we can do our own training for EMT to save costs that way as, as well as EMR.
Okay. That makes sense.
Perfect.
Keep in mind, the chief does not have a say in much of the medical stuff. The medical director of your PSA provider manages the license of your firefighters. The EMT and all that stuff that happens, it falls under the protocols of the medical director of that PSA provider. It's not your chief.
So we were mandated to move to EMT as opposed to EMR? Cause we were in an EMR department, it was an option? And then now we require it? So I guess I'm wondering, is that from the medical director? I know we had to do it to get the variance, we decided that. Okay.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the Council, I made the decision when I came, just based upon the length of time for service for North Memorial to arrive here.
So then that leads to, if I can.
Yes, sir.
There are, you have two levels of license or training. You have emergency medical responder, 40 hours, let's say. And you have an emergency medical technician, 110, 120 hours, right? The difference is oxygen, bandage, wound protection, stabilization, and tube downthroat, epinephrine, beasting kit, you know, much more invasive treatment procedures that the medical director, a medical doctor, allows them to perform based off that certification. So they're gonna be able to provide a much better form of treatment to a patient who needs that treatment. Typically, EMRs are not allowed to do some of that invasive stuff because they haven't had the training. So the fact that you're not all EMT right now, there's maybe we're working through it or balancing, but there's benefits to be in EMT as well.
So I have a question that's a little more, I don't know, up in the clouds than, you know, exact service delivery kinds of things. It's, I think we've been struggling for some time on, you know, right sizing our department. What's the, what's the model that Dayton needs today? And over what period of time do we, do we make these various moves to go toward, I don't know that it's ultimately a, a career department, but I guess that's the end line on the, on that, on that chart. What parameters help us decide that? I know you said every community does it different, so there's no model we can go find and say, here it is, this is state statute number, whatever, and we're gonna implement this. But there has to be things like population, number of calls, service types that we're gonna respond to, all of that. And, and we, we continue to struggle with what that should look like here.
Right. And that's a great question. Based off the information I saw online and so on, you have an imbalance system. That already tells me I should be trying to somehow balance that timeframe. And I would look at, what can I do to get people staffed? Say, what, I've talked to the firefighters, get them involved. Would you like to staff the station during these times? And while you're here, you can do training, you can do all our maintenance. It'll reduce, it should reduce costs in other areas like maintenance and so on, right? Cause we're not having firefighters come back to do all this work. However, the chief works it out. But the fact that the same taxpayers get a different level of service tells me we should already be looking at, how can it balance that out a little bit, right? And then let's just see how that works for a couple of years or whatever. You're gonna use your chief to help give you data and information on how it's working. Maybe we need to add a couple more. Maybe, you know, whatever, maybe we need to bring an inspector in and have that person or assistant chief, whatever, to be a full-timer with the chief who can go and handle majority of the calls during the day while there's that shortage of staff. There's, like, when I, when I say people do it differently, there's a variety of ways to do it. But look at the matrix. Is the time consistent? How many calls are you going to? When you start hitting the 600 call volume and you're requiring a volunteer to come to three calls a day, that's a lot. And it's not, when we say three calls a day, we think, well, that's not much. Well, one of those calls lasted six hours. And the other one, I said, an hour, but when I got back, I had to wash the truck, it didn't have fuel in it, so I had to go shop, get fuel, then I had to fill out the report, now I'm at two hours. So even if it's one call, what are you expecting of your volunteer? So I believe we need to build a system that allows our volunteers to win. That's our responsibility, right? And then pay, money does matter. Money does matter. And I know, and I've, I've said it publicly before, but the pension system, all that stuff's great, but our newer generations are not worried about a pension right now. Most of the time when I traveled over the last four years, they asked me if they could get that money now. How do I get that money now? Cause if I could take the pension money that the state gives me and divert it to hourly rate, most of our firefighters around this area will be in the $50 an hour range. I'm gonna have a really good recruitment and retention plan at 50 bucks an hour, right? And then deduct taxes, deduct fuel, firefighter lose clothes, there's a lot of things that, you know, we don't even account for that happens on incidents, when I get blood on me and I throw out my favorite shirt or whatever, but.
Um, so I've been snooping through, there's a couple of sites that list a lot of different cities, how many paid-on call they have, how many full-time they have. I'm also seeing something termed PPC. Is there models that just pay you for a call? Is that what that is? Pay per call?
Pay per call, yep. Same, same as paid-on call. Well, you can go to, rather than pay them, I don't know what you pay them, but let's say 15 bucks an hour, we're gonna give you 75 bucks a call. That's it.
Oh, so it's the call and then the hours?
Pay per call. You go away from hourly to call.
And then a lot of those same, what I'm seeing is even sites, the places is, I don't remember some of the cities I looked at, but they were in the 80,000 population, they still didn't list Harlaney full-time. Are these people that are moving from, or not, I shouldn't say moving, but basically multiple, they're using multiple fire departments, so they're not showing up as, as anything other than paid-on call?
Um, well, we could look at a Maple Grove. They have like five stations, 150 volunteers, 120 volunteers in five stations, but they also have full-time staff in the day. You look at the Blaine, the SBM Fire District, most, they have like 20 full, 20 responders in the day who are full-time and they're augmented at night by like a battalion chief and a volunteer. On-duty crew though.
But those are fairly large areas.
Yeah.
I mean, when I look at cities anywhere near us, I see under 30, I'm not seeing Harlaney full-time. So that's why I'm wondering.
Oh, I see where you're going. So let's, let's compare East Bethel, very similar population. They have three stations. They have a fire chief. They just, through our, our study in our past few months, we promoted the assistant chief or the fire inspector to an assistant chief. They just went to duty crew last week. And they go to about 1,030 calls was the last number two months ago. But they're reducing their medical calls, they're working on doing that. Not like boom, but over time and measure it, right? So you work through this system and measure it and see if it's working or not.
Was that a response to, I know East Bethel had some turmoil at the start of the year where they had a lot of very unhappy firefighters.
Yeah.
Was that in a response to that or?
They hired me in response to that.
Okay.
Yes. So you're a very similar system. If they reduce their call volume, they will be at about your call volume. And they're going, they just started duty crew. So they're probably eight months ahead of you. That's, that's the direction you're gonna go.
So why not reduce and reassess? Why reduce by what sounds like almost half or half and then also implement the duty crew? So why not reduce, reassess and reevaluate what impact that has and then decide what level of duty crew you need?
So when you decide you're gonna go to a duty crew model, different model, but you're gonna balance it out, because you have people on the station who can get there much quicker than the night king, right? But now you have people in the station. And because they're in the station, why, why get rid of all the calls? Why not let them go to calls and learn the job and train because you're paying them by the hour, why they're at the station? They don't get paid by call anymore. They only get paid for the hours they're at the station.
But is there a world where you maybe move to a duty crew before you needed to then? So if you had reduced your calls and what you're saying is, is you want to give them the opportunity to train and to use their skills, and I'm 100% for that repetition is very important. But if you were able to, I'm just thinking from like our, putting our hats on up here, if you were able to reduce your calls and you didn't, you reduced the stress on your firefighters, what you're asking them to do, the number of calls are going on, the types of calls are going on, so they feel the value of getting to do work when they get there. And you pushed out having to implement a duty crew, again, because it worked for the firefighters and it worked for your budget.
You can do that.
I guess I'm just wondering like, why not, why didn't East Bethel do that? Like why, what was their thought process other than it wasn't really?
They have, they have an imbalance system. They do not have responders in the day. To the point, and this is not just East Bethel, there are times, and I don't know if it's happened here, where no one responds.
I think any small city, you're gonna see an imbalance, it's gonna be automatic.
Yeah. But that's, that's the decision you get to make and it's also the questions you need to answer when the constituents come in and ask, right?
So I think.
I'm edu, I'm trying to educate them.
Just to clarify, so even if we reduce the call volume, we're still gonna have an imbalance in time with the day. And so therefore going to the duty crew model is, they're, they're, they're addressing two different needs. The duty crew model is more about, not, I should say more, but the duty crew model would address this imbalance in time, like getting to the calls during the day versus in the evening. The reducing call volume is just reducing call volume overall. Like they're, they're not necessarily solving the same, they, they may, they may solve some of the same issues, but they are in some ways addressing two separate things.
A lot of times, if you reduce the medical calls, it may even pay for your duty crew program. You know what I mean? But also think about retention. I don't live too far from here and maybe I could sign up to be a duty crew member if you only required me to come here a few times a week. I can't respond from my house to get here in your 10-minute response time. But maybe you'll offer people in the community to fit it into their life when we can use them and they no longer have to hold the phone all the time. See where I'm going?
We're almost, I think we are, I have one last question. And I think this is where a duty crew model does not require the hiring of full-time people. The duty crew model can work with our current, and I think that's where when it has, when I was, when I first initially saw this, the duty crew model came packaged with hiring of full-time people. And so it has taken me a little bit of time to realize that that's, those are not synonymous. We can go to a duty crew model without hiring additional full-time people.
You're changing your delivery model to benefit the fire service, which benefits the community, using the same volunteer.
Just giving them some time and skill, yeah. So, but that took me a while to.
Yeah. No, it's confusing. It's confusing, trust me.
Any other questions? Otherwise we're.
We're technically over time right now.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep.
Uh, we need to adjourn.
Three minute break?
Yes, please.
Oh, yeah, I'll adjourn the work session. Thank you.